Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack National Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Tom, whenever you're ready, you can call the meeting to order.
Okay, thank you, and welcome to the Town Council Meeting for May 14th. If you would please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
To the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, and as I said, this is the council meeting for May 14th. This is a virtual meeting. You can follow or watch on Merrimack TV Channel 20 with thumb cast or on the Merrimack TV Facebook Live page, which is H T T T colon slash slash W W W dot Facebook dot com slash Merrimack TV. If you wish to speak during a public hearing or public comments, the phone number and the meeting ID will appear on the screen. You can call in on either of those numbers along with that meeting ID, and we'll recognize you by the last digits of your phone number when it's your time to be able to speak, and we'll unmute your phone. So if you want to raise your hand to show that you would like to speak and be placed in the queue, you have to press star nine on your phone to raise your hand virtually. Submitting public comments had to be done before now to T C public comments at MerrimackNH.gov. You could still send something to that address, and if we have a chance, we will look for it and catch it during public comment times, or you can call in and raise your hand and we'll acknowledge you. Because this is a virtual meeting and whatnot, we need to verify that all the councilors are present and can hear, so if you would, as I call in your name, identify yourself, where you are, and whether or not there's anybody with you in the room, or if you're by yourself. So I am Tom Koenig. I'm participating electronically from my home due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and I am alone in the room here, although should somebody come in, it would be a family member. Lon Woods?
This is Councilor Lon Woods. I'm participating electronically from where I am at Two Arbor Street in Merrimack. I am alone.
Are you participating due to the COVID-19 pandemic?
I'm participating electronically from Two Arbor Street due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and I am alone.
And you can hear us?
The miscommunication.
Thank you. Nancy?
Hi, I'm Councilor Nancy Harrington. I am participating electronically from my home due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I am alone, and I can hear you.
Thank you. Finley? You're muted. Finley, you're muted. All day.
Sorry about that. Didn't want to talk out of turn. This is Finley Rothausen, and I'm participating electronically from my home on Kittredge Lane due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Currently, I am alone, but there may be an occasional family member in the vicinity, and I can hear you, believe it or not.
Thank you. Peter?
This is Councilor Peter Albert. I'm participating electronically from my home due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm alone right now, but I could have a family member that may stroll by at any time.
Thank you. Barbara?
Hi, this is Councilor Barbara Healy. I am participating electronically from my home due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I am alone, except for my two dogs, so please excuse me for that, and I can hear you.
Thank you, Barbara. And Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. This is Councilor Bill Boyd. I'm participating electronically from my dining room here at 139 Jopper Road due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I am alone, I can hear you, and where I'm sitting is adjacent to the kitchen, so there may be my wife frequenting the kitchen, or I may be joined by three of my dogs like Councilor Healy as well. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I did go to the Right to Know Meeting that NMHA was presenting the other day, and among other things, this was one of the things that they said we needed to do, but obviously Town Hall picked up on that before I had a chance to pass it along, so they included that. So thank you very much to the staff. We're taking care of that item to make sure that we're all in line. By way of announcements, hang on just a second, let me see if I can find what I have. Right now, voting day, the official ballot vote will be held on Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020. Further details will be released in the near future. Please check our town website to get updates. And I have here that our upcoming Town Council Meeting will be Thursday, May 28th. That would be our second meeting of the month. It would be a virtual, regular meeting of the Town Council. We may end up deciding to do something different throughout the meeting, and we'll let people know as that comes up. Eileen, did you have any other announcements?
Yes. Do you want to talk into this?
You can just talk, I think.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Oh, wow. Absentee ballots for the postponed April 14th Town Meeting are available. Voters wishing to vote by absentee ballot should contact the Town Clerk's Office at 424-3651, or see the Elections and Voting section of the Town Clerk's website for an application and information regarding absentee ballots. All voters are advised that in light of the current public health state of emergency, Emergency Orders Number 16 and Number 26 by the Governor and current Public Health Guidance on Social Distancing and avoiding being in public groups, public in groups of 10 or more, all voters have a reasonable ground to conclude that a physical disability exists within the meeting of RSA 657:1. Therefore, all voters may request an absentee ballot on that basis. So to put that in English, basically.
Thank you.
Anyone can apply for an absentee ballot. We very strongly encourage you to do so. We are, I understand that the Town Clerk is looking into sending out a mailer that includes the request for an application to all registered voters with a self-addressed stamped envelope to send back to her. In that, in that form, it's a very specific state form that cannot be altered in any way for this, for this pandemic or anything else. So as you look through the items that you can check as the reason why you would, you are unable to vote in person, and that you are requesting an absentee ballot, you should check the one that says disability, because it has been determined by the Attorney General's Office and the Secretary of State that this is a qualifying situation and.
As you look.
Yes. Any questions on that? No. Okay. So voter registration due to COVID-19?
Because it has.
All persons not registered to vote are eligible to, for absentee voter registration. I don't know why she wrote this twice, so sorry, never mind, we already said that. And that's all I have for announcements.
Okay. Peter, you had a question?
Actually, not a question. I wanted to recognize a couple of things. Can I do that now, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just basically that this week is Police Officer Memorial Week, and this week, they basically honor those police officers who've lost their lives in the line of duty, and most specifically in Washington, where the names of the officers killed in the line of duty last year have been engraved on the wall. I know that Merrimack PD sent down a contingent, as they always do, and posted some pictures, they look sharp. The other thing I wanted to just mention was recognize, just recently, a former employee and town resident Joan Vasco was a secretary of Merrimack PD for many years, and she and her family lived in Merrimack, and she just recently passed away. She was living in Bristol, so I just want to send my condolences to her family. I worked with Joan many years, and what a wonderful, wonderful lady, and she was one of those folks that kept, kept things moving at the PD.
Awesome. Thank you for letting us know. Also, this would normally be the open house weekend for the police department, is that right? Is that why, so I hadn't realized Police Week was coming up?
Yeah, that's correct, and you know, I know that they enjoy that, and a lot of citizens enjoy it, and frankly, I think they do a nice job. It's too bad.
That this mess is in the way of it. Yep. Anybody have any questions or comments for the announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on. Recognitions, resignations, and retirements. We do want to recognize Dan Ricker, who's resigning from the Planning Board. The town's going to accept his resignation and present him a certificate for his almost three years of service on the Planning Board. So Dan, we appreciate the work you've done, we're sorry to see you go, but thank you very much for stepping up and helping out. Can I get a motion to accept his resignation?
So moved.
Bill?
Seconded with regret.
Did somebody move it?
Woods.
Woods, okay, thank you. So Lon's moved to resignation acceptance, and Bill's seconded with regret. Any other comments? Bill, you worked with him a little bit, go ahead.
And I know, and I know you worked with him as well, and I'm really sorry to see Dan go. He brought a tremendous amount of energy and enthusiasm to the Planning Board. I thought he brought a different and fresh perspective to some of the applications that came before the Planning Board. He was nothing less than the consummate professional in my dealings with him, always polite, always courteous, and I think it's a sad, it is a sad day for the Town of Merrimack to lose somebody of Dan's ilk from serving. I think the Planning Board, and I think our community, from a development perspective, is much better because of his participation, and I hope that when his family and war commitments free up a little bit, that he would consider participating, if not with the Planning Board, some other, some other committee in town, because he did, he did an excellent job. So we're certainly going to miss him.
Okay. Any other comments? We'll call for a vote by roll call. I accept yes. Lon Woods?
Woods, aye.
Nancy?
Yes.
Finley?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
Bill Boyd?
Boyd, aye.
Okay, so that passes 7-0-0. We'll get that certificate sent out to him. If you haven't had a chance to sign it in the Town Hall offices, please do so. I haven't talked about it since Sunday to check on that, so I'm assuming everybody had a chance since they all got their package for today's meeting, but whatever. We don't have any appointments scheduled or public hearings for tonight. Legislative updates from state reps. I don't see that any have called in. We can give them a short period of time to call in real quickly. I know that everybody's been under this kind of stay-at-home type function, but I know the Governor and senior staff and whatnot have all been obviously working consistently throughout this whole thing, so I'm not sure there's any updates available. I'm not seeing anybody calling in, so we'll go ahead, and if somebody calls in, we'll try to catch back to them. Town Managers Report.
Okay, so the first one is a series of questions and comments by Matt Casperius, our Parks and Recreation Director, and I'm just going to read his email because it deals with various recreation programs and things that are facilities. So he says he has heard inquiries from the community about when we would open beach volley, the beach volleyball courts at Watson Park. He says Kyle Fox, the Public Works Director, and he are okay with opening them, or as am I. Are you all okay with that? Beach volleyball at Watson Park?
At Watson Park. Peter?
I'm not necessarily against it. I guess that's going to lead to my question of what about the other ball fields and the basketball courts and stuff?
I'm getting to that.
Okay.
All right. So I'll finish, and then you can comment on each. So he has some thoughts about social distancing. He considers the beach volleyball to be similar to tennis, which, and those are open. And we also don't allow organized leagues at the volleyball court because, for all of the public, so that should be an issue. Matt also believes that the skate park should be opened, and I'm not opposed to that either. He wanted to say that other facilities in town, he's getting guidance from the National Recreation and Parks Association, and the CDC, they've put out guidance that says playgrounds should remain closed until we get to Phase 3. Then, as far as athletic fields are concerned, the CDC currently recommends that people do not participate in organized activities or sports. He thinks it's okay for a family to go kick around a soccer ball while social distancing, but obviously not appropriate for team or sports league to hold practices or games at this point. Their recommendation is that they remain closed until there is no widespread community transmission, transmission. So does anybody have any comments or input on those things? The volleyball courts, the skate park, and the athletic fields?
I'm just concerned about the social distancing aspect, about the exceptions. It would appear to me to be an exception if we're not encouraging basketball, if we're not encouraging Kids Cove. I don't know that there's that opportunity for social distancing in a game like beach volleyball.
Well, that, as far as I'm.
It's a concern of mine.
Now you start talking about things like, we decided to open the tennis courts up again, which is similar, although even more enclosed than the beach volleyball would be, and as he points out, we're not allowing organized leagues. I believe the Kids Cove is entirely different because there's actually a physical structure there that people can get their fingers all over, and that kind of thing. It's, it's not so much the social distancing aspect of Kids Cove that I would consider to be a problem, but more of the structure itself.
Wanted to express my concerns.
Okay, Barbara?
You know, I have to agree with Lon. You know, in my younger day, even though I was short, I played volleyball, and when you go up to the net, there is no social distancing. You're in each other's face. And I, until we get direction from the Governor and the task force that they are, you know, are okay with opening up the parks and not maintaining social distancing, I, I'm not comfortable with it at all. Because you know, you shouldn't wear a mask if you are actually engaging in heavy exercise, and if you've ever played volleyball, you can get up close, personal, and heavy, heavily into exercise and exertion, so I have some problems with that still.
Okay, but just understand that we know that the parks aren't closed, right? You know that?
Yes, but we're talking about other things here.
Right.
Peter?
I think, you know, and I tend to agree with Lon. I mean, whenever I played volleyball, I mean, as much as you made contact with folks when you're all going for the ball to spike it over the net and so forth, and I, I kind of related to the contact you might have in basketball, where you're, but you're constantly moving, so my, I'm saying if we're not going to have people on basketball courts, then why are we having them on volleyball courts? Tennis, to me, you're separated, even if you're playing doubles, you're clearly separated. So my inclination is not to do that until we're ready to open up the fields for other sports as well.
Anybody else?
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a difference in, between beach volleyball and what I would say like the indoor volleyball. Beach volleyball is usually one-on-one or two-on-two, whereas the indoor, you have, you know, two rows, two rows of five, 10 people on the court. So the question would then become, and I'm not trying to, not trying to nuance the issue, is that if we open up the volleyball courts, could we have the ability to limit it to two participants per team as opposed to, you know, a gaggle per team? I mean, do we have the ability to do that?
The only reason, I don't mean to interrupt you, Bill, but.
No, it's okay.
We don't have social distancing police, so.
I agree with you.
I don't mean to be sarcastic about it, I really don't, but there's so many people are asking us, are you doing this, and what are you doing about that? And it's not against the law, so if, if you are, I see what all of you are saying regarding volleyball, and that's fine with me if you, we just won't set up the nets, so I don't have any issue with that as long as you all feel the same way.
Follow-up? Go ahead. Thanks. I happen to be at Mines Falls in the city in Ashua, running this weekend, and the city has posted signs, you know, emphasizing social distancing out on the trails. If we choose to go down this particular path, is it fair to say that we're going to put up signage reminders? I know, and like I said, I know you don't want to be the, the social distancing police. Are we going to be playing, you know, doing signage to remind people about social distancing if we do, if we go down this path?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Finley?
I, for me, I, I understand closing Kids Coves, because as Eileen pointed out and reminded me way back when we originally discussed Kids Cove, there's a lot of hands-on things, and you got kids drooling and chewing on things, and hands all over it. You can't clean that up, but I'm more inclined to put up the signs, reminding people, big sign, I don't care, signage saying that, you know, we encourage this social distancing and so on, but allow people to make those decisions up, where there's nothing that they're really going to be touching that belongs to us, and if a family wants to go play beach volleyball, they know where, what their personal situation, situations are for their family, and so that's what I like to try and do, is let people react responsibly and make those decisions for themselves. You know, closing up the, any of the playground equipment that we're not going to be taking care of, keeping clean for everybody, is one thing to close. The others, I'm more inclined to let personal responsibility rule. That's just my thoughts.
Nancy?
Finley, do you, do you feel that way about the basketball as well?
I do. I mean, people, I think in New Hampshire, you know, we, at least I've found that people do pay attention as they're walking down the aisles at the grocery store, or at the lumberyard. Everybody is generally paying attention, so, you know, we would all know as we go to use the facilities, that we have to be paying attention to those things, and, and so, you know, I just, I think it would work. I mean, I don't believe we would be negligent in any fashion, and I definitely, as Eileen suggests, don't want our PD going and making sure people are distancing properly, but if we put the signage out, then they know, and if they chose to do things differently, that was their responsibility to be sure that people they were interacting with would be okay in fact interact with.
How about the skate park? Same?
I don't have a problem opening it. I think Kids Cove is different. It's a climb-on thing. And, and I suppose you fall and, you know, as you roll down those two, whatever the pieces are, I suppose that might be something, but I, I don't have that much heartburn over that as well. I do believe the signage. I want to make sure people know we're really conscious of that, and that we want to be sure that everybody's thinking about it.
Right.
And I think that that's our part, and I would approve of that.
Peter, you want to add something?
Yeah, I guess the signage part, I mean, we're into almost month two here. I don't know, it's about social distancing. Why do we even have to post signs at this point?
I think the reason we do that is because people are starting to forget. If you look out on the roads, the traffic's increasing, there's more problems showing up. I think everything we can possibly do to continue to remind folks, this problem is still here, and it's still real, and your best bet is social distance. You know, I have my own thoughts about masks, and gloves, and plastic shields, and, and all of that stuff, but at least generally speaking, I think social distancing is still a very clever idea that we ought to be following, and, and so, go ahead, Peter.
Just a follow-up then, and I get what you're saying, Tom, and I, again, I'm not, if we're going to put up signs, let's put up signs. I, you know, no problem. I guess my next question would be is, how long are we going to, you know, when do we, this order's going into effect, but I guess I'm curious, because I've been asked by members of the M Y A, when do they see us lifting the ban on the fields so that they can play baseball, or soccer, and so forth?
That's a good question.
All I can go by is, oh, sorry, may I speak?
Go ahead, you got it.
All I can go by is what I'm reading here from Matt Casperius, who's, who gets his guidance from the CDC, and they suggest that we do not allow people to participate on our fields in organized activities or sports at this time. So that's their recommendation, and you can recommend otherwise if you'd like.
I tend to agree with that. Long as the Governor has his stay-at-home order, in whatever shape it is in, it's still called a stay-at-home order. I don't think we should be promoting organized sports. If a couple of people want to go out and play volleyball, or somebody wants to go jog down a trail, I don't have a problem with that. It's a good idea, and exercise is a clever thing to be doing at this point. But I can't see, you know, five-on-five, or eight-on-eight volleyball, because everybody getting all over that ball, unless you know those people really well, and that might not be enough. Your sweat, everything else is going to be on that ball, and it's going to be shared amongst everybody there, whether you're touching them or not, you're going to be sharing body fluids if you want. And so there's some concern over larger groups. I can see maybe two or three, or a family, but I don't know how to control that, other than put up signs and trust people to be responsible.
So Denise just weighed in.
Oh, good.
Please chief, and she feels that we shouldn't open any of these things until the, we get some more guidance from the Governor.
Maybe until the stay-at-home 2.0 lasts.
Yes.
Barbara?
Yeah, that, that was part of the point of what I was saying, is that it's okay to get the guidance from the CDC, but really what's regulating and calling the shots here in New Hampshire is the Governor and his task force. So I would think that a good thing to do would be to contact two, two-on-one as well to find out what the Governor's thoughts are on, and the signage out at Wildcat Falls not to park hasn't really worked either, so I'm not so sure about that expenditure to say, "social distance." Thank you.
Nancy?
I'm of two minds here. I appreciate the freedom. I'm, I'm of two minds here. I appreciate the, the freedom and self-responsibility issue as it relates to what Finley is talking about, but I think the bottom line is, we're just not there yet. It doesn't mean that it's not going to happen. We're just not going to put the nets up. They still have, they still may play. They're going to play basketball whether we officially open up the basketball courts or not. And that's where you get to, you know, I would not expect the police to be responsible to respond to that. That's where individual responsibility comes in. And perhaps that's similar to the volleyball. There may be people who will do a virtual net, whatever, but I think we need to be a little bit safer than sorry. Really, the only debatable ones are the volleyball and the skate park. Basketball, you're not going to be able to control. I mean, they're going to play that regardless. And I would not, and put a sign up encouraging that, but I would not go into any enforcement issues with this.
So I'm, what I'm gathering from the majority of you is that you do not want to do anything, open up anything new at this point in time?
I think that's probably the safe answer, yeah.
Okay. So this isn't much information, but we're, we're getting an awful lot of calls about summer camp and poor Matt Casperius, our recreation director, is pulling his hair out as to what's going to happen. And apparently, there's a, some summer camp guidance that's being vetted by the Department of Public Health, and he expects that he'll have some, something concrete on the summer camp by early next week. So as soon as we get that information, we'll make sure we get it out. Because it's, it's funny, because I would have thought that, you know, parents would be, "Oh, well, I don't want my child to go to camp and I'm concerned" and things like that. And Matt says, "No," they're like,
"Take them, take them, please take my kids."
So, all right. So I have a bunch of, I have a bunch of, of reports, items in my report. So the zoning board of administration will meet virtually on June 2nd. Bill, you're, you're not muted, so we can hear a lot of stuff that's going on over there. So the, as I said, the ZBA will be meeting virtually on June 2nd to hear a portion of the currently submitted items on the April and May agenda. The planning board will meet virtually on June 16th. A second ZBA virtual meeting will be held on June 24th and to handle the remaining existing cases and anything new submitted by June 9th. The public works department would like to welcome back Patrick Hill, who is a mechanic two for our equipment division from his military deployment. Patrick has been a member of the Armed Serv, Armed Army Reserves for over 20 years now. He joined the reserves out of high school in March of 2000 and is now a staff sergeant. He has been deployed five times during his service, 2010, 11 to Iraq, two deployments stateside in New Jersey, 2016, 17 to Kuwait, and his latest, 2019, 20, and you'll have to pardon the pronunciation, Cutter? Yes? Okay. During Patrick's service, his roles include chemical wealth, warfare, weaponry, mechanic, and truck driver. The, so congratulations and many thanks to Patrick Hill, and we're glad to have him back and appreciate his service. Public Works Operations Manager Lori Barrett, on behalf of the town of Merrimack, was the recipient of the Patriotic Employer Award, which is sponsored by the employer support of the Guard and Reserve, ESGR. The patriotic award is given to an employer of an armed service member who has been nominated by that employee for going above and beyond in supporting the soldier in civil duties as well as in his obligations to serving our nation. This award recognizes supervisors and managers nominated by the National Guardsman Employee for support provided to the nominator. Recognizing supportive employers is vital to the ESGR's mission. Patrick Hill, mechanic two of the Equipment Maintenance Division, nominated Lori due to the support he received from her, the department, and the town for the town, and for the town's stance as an employer who embraces veteran, hiring veterans and openly supports officers who choose to support their country. So I think that's very nice. The public works will hold a, will host a virtual public information meeting for the Old Blood Road, yay, reconstruction project on Wednesday, May 20th at 6:00 PM. The meeting can be viewed on cable channel 20 and Merrimack's TV's Facebook Live page. Anyone wishing to participate in the meeting by phone should follow the instructions on the town website for the meeting. So that public information, a long time in coming. Congratulations to the people on Old Blood Road. That's finally coming to fruition. I just signed the contracts today for that one and also for the sewer, the extensive sewer job that's going to be done on Babuzik Lake Road in Madeline Bennett. So those will begin, be beginning. I believe he's already had a meeting?
Yes, last night.
Okay. So the town's 2020 paving is underway with crack ceiling operations started this week. The contractor is taking advantage of lower traffic volumes by getting an early start on the work. Details of the program can be found on the Public Works website and daily updates can be received by liking the Public Works Facebook page, facebook.com/merrimackdpw. Work has begun already on the sewer line reconstruction in Babuzik Lake Road between McQuestion Road and Jessica Drive. Motorists should expect delays through the work zone for the next couple of weeks. Around June 1st, the corridor will be closed to through traffic for approximately three months while the sewer reconstruction is completed. Questions should be referred to the Public Works Department at 424-5137. The fire department is in the process of applying for two significant grants through FEMA, as you know. The first is the Assistance to Firefighters Grant called AFG, which is intended to fi, fund capital, equipment, and projects. Merrimack's, Merrimack Fire's AFG grant request, as you know, is for approximately $500,000 for the purchase of a new fire engine. This grant application was submitted in early March and awards are anticipated to begin in late June, early July. The second grant is the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safer Grant that we talked about significantly during the budget process. The fire department is in the, in the final stages of completing that application, which is due at the end of the week. Our Safer Application requests just over $750,000 to help fund four additional firefighter positions for three years. It expect, it is expected that the awards for this grant will also start in July. Interim Chief, interim Fire Chief Duke would like to thank all the people who have helped in the preparation of these two grants. He has put together a group of very enthusiastic and knowledgeable firefighters who have, who have contributed a great deal to filling out these grants and providing the information that's necessary. And that is all I have.
Great. Do we have any questions for Eileen at this point? Seeing none. Thank you, Eileen. I appreciate it. I'm gonna, so we don't have anything on the consent agenda. Under old business, there's two items. I'm going to ask that we move continuation of town election discussion up to the beginning here. I'm with us, and I know she's got other commitments she's got to get to, so I want to not stretch it out any farther than we already have. So Lynn, I'm going to unmute you and ask if you want to turn your video on to join us. I can't find my mouse. Attempt to unmute you. Maybe I'm not. You might be able to unmute yourself there. And then if you want to turn your video on and join us, that would be awesome.
I don't need video.
It makes us feel better. We're all sitting here on video.
Yeah, but I got roots, so I'm not going to do video.
Okay. You can put a hat on.
Now, I'm, I'm sitting here in the backyard in a gazebo with friends that I haven't seen for six months, and we're doing social distancing.
Good for you.
And I just excused myself from the group and said, "I gotta go deal with this stuff." So here I am, guys.
Eileen. So we made an announcement at the beginning that the election was going to be on May 20, on, May, June 23rd?
At the moment, yes.
Or later, I guess.
Not before.
Not before June 23rd at this stage. And last time we talked, we had planned on having the election at the three polling places, being constant with the way we do our elections in town. There's been a couple of things come up, suggestion-wise, that we wanted to talk about amongst the council to decide whether or not we might want to, A, for this meeting only, this election only, keep it at the three polling places, or B, move it to a single polling place, maybe at J Muse or at the J Muse complex, where the All Purposer or the Smith, where we've been doing things. And then two other options have come forward. One would be to try and do a drive-through polling, as, as was done recently in Conway and was also done in Bo, at a single location at the highway garage off Turkey Hill. And then the fourth option would be to do the, the drive-through polling, or attempt to do that, do the drive-through polling at the three locations we normally were voting at. Just that way, nobody gets confused about where to go and can't say, "Well, I don't know where the highway garage is," or something like that. So I want to open that discussion to see if anybody has a particular, strong desire one way or the other to try and make a change at this point, and if so, make a change to what? And I'm glad Lynn to be here so she can help us understand any pros and cons or ask, answer questions that the council might have.
There are, there are pros and cons for all of these options. And I will say, there's no right or wrong for any of them. I just wanted to put them out there. And I was one of the ones that, two weeks ago, I was a no-way-no-how for drive-through, but I've seen how Bo has handled it, I've seen how Conway has handled it, and I can see how it would work in Merrimack. We're in unprecedented times. We are not in our normal election mode, which would have been prior to where we are now. So no matter what we do, we're in an exception process. Whether it's an exception process as to how we do it or where we do it, we're in an exception process. So I'm just here to provide you with the knowledge that I have so that you guys can make the best decisions that you can make for the town.
Okay. Anybody? Peter?
Yeah, I'm just going to start off. I, I don't want to drag this out, but I'm in favor of staying with our three polling places, and I reviewed the plans with the drive-through voting, and I think it's a good idea. So I'm in favor of that as well, three polling places with the drive-through voting.
I have not, an hour ago was the first time I had seen anything about drive-through voting at three sites. And I will tell you, the initial comment I have is weather. And we don't know what the weather will be on any given day. So if you tell me that's what we're going to do, we're going to do it. But we've got weather issues that could come up, you know, in, in 24 hours, never mind anything else. So.
I, I get that, and I understand. Paul, do you, do you, are you prepared to present that plan to us? Can you share?
I, I can, I can share it. I can put it up on the screen. Just give me a second here. I have the three diagrams. Let me share my screen and then, hold on, I gotta do a couple of things.
This is the first time I've seen this. I would love to have seen it earlier so that I could have kind of debated it, but it might work. I think the biggest issue that we have with this is weather, and we don't know what the weather is going to be, and we could plan on it. And if the weather is really, really crap on that day, I, I don't, it, it just, everything goes to pot, but I'll consider it. Like I said, this is the first I've seen this, and I'm, I'm happy to consider it.
Okay, I, um.
Can you see my screen?
I, I can.
I can.
Okay. Can't move it off of the top of everything else, but I can see your screen. So do you want to talk through this real quick, Paul, and we'll, we'll just see what?
Yeah. Basically, I, well, right before Bo actually did the drive-through voting, we were talking here at Town Hall, trying to figure out how we could get the ballot vote completed in a timely manner so that we, we could have our election. And I, I asked a couple of people and talked to Diane a little bit about what, what the needs are of the community and what she needs to do. And then I, after I did some of this design work, I got the chief of police involved with the police department because they're the ones that are going to have to handle the traffic control. And we made some adjustments through each one of the sites. But basically, looking at St. John Newman, you would come off of the 101A through that Continental 101A intersection, come down the road, basically drive into the church parking lot, like you would normally drive in the church parking lot. At the beginning, there would be a place where somebody would be checking voter ID, making sure that they're there and on the checklist, and then putting a number on the car with the number of people in the car, whether it's one, two, three, four, underneath the, underneath the windshield. That person would then be directed to either lane one, lane two, to go down and then pick up their number of ballots that they have for the car and be handed them the, the ballots. Ask, they could park, fill out the ballots. As they fill out the ballots, they would exit lane one or two and go down to the exit, which would be on the bottom with the ballot boxes, and we'd collect the ballots. People in the car would put them in. So basically, it's really no touch, keeping social distancing if people are registered. Are not registered, there would be a spot or a tent available for them to do same-day registration, because we do same-day registration in the state of New Hampshire. So there would be a spot there for them to pull in, they would stay in their car. Registration form would be brought to them, they would fill it out, given back, and then given a ballot to vote. Same procedure, exit the lane, go out to the ballot box with their ballot in. For those people that do not want to show ID, there's a tent available for them. They would drive in there, they would get their picture taken or what they need to do, affidavit signed, still, they get their ballot, vote, exit the same way. At St. John Newman, we would use overflow. If those first two lanes fill up, we'd use overflow behind the building. And basically, there's one way in and one way out, and that's how we would direct them at St. John Newman. At the middle school, which is the next thing, slide, is they would come in, Madeline Bennett, come up to where the teacher's parking lot is, there'd be voter identification right at that corner, verify them. If they are, if they are verified and they don't need to register, they'd be asked to go into lane one there, park the car, same thing, vote. If they're not, if they're not registered, we'd ask them to drive around the building. There would be two spots, the ID and the, the same-day registration would be around the back of the building because there's more parking spots there, where on the left-hand side of the screen. And then the ballot box would be put at that corner for collection, drive down Madeline Bennett, and then no traffic crossing paths there either. Drive down Madeline Bennett, and then, no traffic crossing paths there either. The third one is J Muse. What we'd ask for J Muse is, we'd ask the people to turn around, drive, drive all the way down Agarra and come up McGowan Street and queue facing the high school for that. That will free up Baboosak Lake Road, and there won't be queuing on Baboosak Lake Road. There'll be down, and that's a long, that's a mile, mile and a half loop. Hopefully, we won't be that backed up because everybody would be doing absentee ballots, as mentioned before. We have two lanes for people to go up, same process, verification of IDs, number underneath the windshield. They'd be asked to vote, pick up their ballots, park the car in the parking spots. There's an, I didn't get a chance to go count the number of parking spots out there at Our Lady and Mercy Church, but I believe there's over 50, 55 spots in there. So, there's plenty of spots there. Uh, there will also be a tent for no ID and first-time voter in the middle. We'd set that up. A overflow parking would be done in front of the Smith Gym. And, uh, in front of, uh, where the James Mascollo Upper Elementary School there, the church and, and the school, that could be overflow parking. We'd exit out the, uh, school street towards Baboosak Lake Road. And if traffic gets backed up, since police are already there because it's an election, we'd have a police officer at the corner of Baboosak Lake Road and School Street, letting the traffic out onto the, um, onto, uh, onto Baboosak Lake Road so they could go home either way. Um, basically, ran this also by the attorney. The attorney put some language in there about, uh, the vote itself. And there are some things that...
Oh, which attorney?
Uh, Matt Upton.
Okay.
Our attorney.
You're okay?
Ran that through, and he, uh, he went over the vote itself, and we added one through, items 1 through 7 in the document itself. Um, understanding that this is not perfect, and there's some things that still need to be worked out, logistics, and that sort. Feeling that it's, it's a good start to move forward. There's other things that we can do, um, with trying to get the ballot boxes certified, counting the ballots, um, and opening that up to the public. We have an ambulance garage over here. Um, registering voters, we have an ambulance garage over here that we could use to, uh, we'll clear it out and register voters in there. We can hold the ballot count in there, be free to count the number of ballots that we had. We can have the checking of the machines. We can do it in that ambulance garage with a little logistics. Um, the one thing that, uh, we would have to work out is at the end of the night, um, where we would do the tallying and bringing everybody back into a location. Um, we could see at the end of the night, we could either use the school, uh, the All Purpose Room to bring the ballots back like we normally do and set up, uh, boundaries so everybody could be socially distant. Or we could do it in the ambulance garage, which is right across the street. Um, however, that's a little tighter, and that will probably take more time to do. So, there's that, just that one little thing that we need to work out towards the end of the night. But like I said, we could probably use the All Purpose Room, um, to do our ballot counting and bring all the ballot boxes back and, and like we do at the end of the night of every election, where we just have, uh, the, um, the staff in there counting, recounting, checking, and things of that sort, where we could use that whole gym to make people socially distant apart for, for the council, for both the school and the town, because this is a dual election. Questions?
Um, thank you, Paul. I appreciate it. It looks like a fair amount of work's been done. I can see some adjustments are gonna have to be made to make something like that work. I, to me, it, it seems like there's just way too much involved in trying to make this happen, especially as Lynn points out, we have no idea what the weather's gonna be. On a nice lake, day like today, you could do this almost exactly the way you laid it out.
Right.
This turns the argument over so that the picture's not a mirror image and you're, and you're in good shape. Um, but, um, let's see what other people think. Peter?
Um, I guess I didn't hear, the inclement weather issue is a legitimate one. And does Paul's plan include what they would do, let's say, if it were raining?
I plan on having tents out there by the, uh, ID verification. Everywhere, there's a spot where there's a person standing. There would be, we would, we'd either rent a tent or bring a tent. We have some tents from like, uh, Parks and Rec and things of that sort. So, there, we would be underneath tents at that time. Um, since people are voting in their car, the inclement weather really doesn't affect the vote itself because they'd be voting in their car. Um, but we would, we would have tents at every one of those locations where we're verifying IDs, where there's, uh, no ID, where we have to take the picture, new voter registration, and where the ballot box drop, or there would be tents.
Just a follow-up?
Sure.
Paul, are already these tents big enough that, uh, the folks could drive through?
I was trying not to get the tents that big, uh, to be quite honest with you because I do not want to drive stakes into people's pavements for, for bigger tents like that.
Can we take the diagrams down?
Yep.
Is that okay, Tom?
It's fine with me.
Okay.
I, I didn't have it on anyway.
So, um, you know, we, uh, we, we, I was trying not, like I said, Councilman Albert, I was trying not to get big enough tents where I'd have to drive a stake through somebody's parking lot without their permission.
All right, thank you.
That still remains an issue or a concern because if you have to go out and hand something, ballots to people and it's raining, um, there would be an issue. We'd need some kind of an overhang or something, I would think, to protect against getting the ballots all wet and people's windows being open and water pouring in. Um, which I think is why Lynn is suggesting the DPW garage, because you can drive into the garage and you're out of the rain. I don't know, Lynn, if you want to chime in on that? Or, uh, Brian McCarthy is with us as well, if you want to unmute yourself, Brian?
There is an issue with weather with regards to the ballots. We've had issues with the ballots on good weather when it's been hot and humid. The machines don't like any kind of humidity. So, if we are handling ballots, excuse me, outside, and like I said, if, if it's good weather, this, this will work fine. But if it's not, if it's hot, if it's humid, if it's even just any, not even rain, but just...
Mist.
Just mist, then the ballots are gonna get cranky. And looking at the experience of Bo and Conway, um, they had ballots where the machines just gagged and they had to take the machines offline because they, they jammed so bad that they couldn't use them. So, the weather is an issue regardless of what we do.
Right.
Okay, anybody else have any comments, any suggestions? Way to go. Finley?
Can I, can I speak?
Barbara, I'm sorry, who?
Eileen.
Eileen, go, go ahead.
Yes. So, um, I sent you a text because I just listened to a voicemail that I got from, um, Bud Fitch from the Attorney General's Office this morning. And, um, he didn't, um, he didn't offer an opinion, but, uh, the, the way that he phrased, uh, what he was talking about led me to believe that he was discouraging it. Uh, and so basically, what he said was, um, let me get it. Sorry. Um, shucks. Okay. Um, so, according, so what he said was, according to his records, Merrimack's voter checklist, uh, contains 20,779 people. Conway, while he didn't say, um, how many voters are on their checklist, had a, had a total of 1,457 people who voted. Of the 1,457 voters, 921 of them voted by absentee ballot, leaving only 536, um, people who voted in person. So, I just kind of extrapolated from that message that he thought that we were too big.
I will, I will, I will tell you that Conway typically, and I've talked to the moderator at Conway. I've also talked to the, um, attorney involved with this, that Conway typically gets 1,500 to 2,000 people voting in their town elections, regardless of how many they have on the checklist. And they have about 9,000 on the checklist, which is significantly less than we do. But they get 15 to 2,000 typically showing up on the election, which is slightly less than us. In the past 20 years, we have had typically, unless there is something extremely controversial like the library, um, we have had anywhere from 2,000 to 2,500 typically on our check, on our voting list. So, we are a little bit higher than they are as far as the number of people voting. Um, they typically have a thousand, a hundred people doing absentee on their regular elections. We typically have a hundred, uh, uh, no, I'm sorry. We typically have like 30 absentee ballots. Right now, we've got about 125 requests for absentee ballots already. I think that will increase. Conway said most of their requests for absentee ballots came in the week prior to the election. So, they had 900, but a lot of those were just prior to the election.
Okay. Barbara, did you want to add something?
Tom, it's me again.
Hello.
Uh, I just wanted to say, um, just, um, just to be, uh, more specific during Paul, first of all, I want to say, Paul, what an awesome job you really did putting this all together. A lot of thought went into it and all that kind of thing. And, um, a lot of hurdles have been looked over. And as Tom had pointed out, this was a significant amount of work. So, I sincerely appreciate, um, all the work that you did on this. And it was pretty much just you that did it. So, um, but, so what he did in his memo was he put together the actual numbers that we had for, um, 2018 and 2019. So, in 2018, we had 3,016 votes. Um, and in 2019, we had 3,325 residents vote. Um, and over the last five years, um, voting in town elections has been, um, on average, 2,400 people.
Okay. Barbara?
Yeah, I, I guess I got a couple of things. So, first of all, the message that, um, Eileen had passed to us from Bud Fitch, I didn't interpret that as a message to us not to go with it. I interpreted that as purely numbers, uh, very objectively stated versus subjectively trying to get us not to go that route. But I do have some questions regarding how this would work. And, and granted, Paul, you may not know yet, so that's okay, but just some things to think about. So, for the sites, we were at the church and the schools. Are we gonna be able to get into the schools? Because people are going to need restrooms during the day. Um, I'm a little concerned about privacy in a car. Now, you can say that, well, if it's a husband and wife with kids in the back, you know, they may all have the same mindset. But I'll tell you, in my house, we're registered in different parties. So, you know what I mean? We still need to maintain the privacy of the voter. Uh, and also, what is the plan for promoting absentee ballots at this point in time?
As, as we talked about last meeting, um, my understanding had been they were gonna mail out the absentee applications to everybody.
Okay.
And yet, but we're, we're in the process of trying to get that to go forward with Governor...
So, maybe what we can do to help promote that so that, because, and everybody's looking for it, is just let people know they're coming. They're not gonna know from this meeting because a lot of, a lot of folks don't watch this. But maybe we can put, use the auto, electronic signs or whatever to say, "Watch your mail. Here it comes."
Yep. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do to try and promote this vote. If it's not before the 23rd, we still have a little over a month and a week. Um, so there's, there's a lot of things that can go on, and there's plenty of time to get the applications out there and, and make it viable to get as many absentee ballots in as possible. Um, Finley, you had something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not opposed to this, but I just see a boatload of moving parts, and the weather definitely is one of those, uh, big, uh, question marks. So, uh, I, uh, I don't know how to best handle it unless you, you know, unless we did narrow it down to the one, I think, uh, on the paper as quickly as Paul put it together. It makes reasonable sense there. Uh, but I'm just, I, there, I just would hate to see it turn into a nightmare. You know, ju- just because I would want people to be able to get there. I'm not sure. I, I don't know. I, I, spacing of people going in physically into a polling place, um, I think the numbers will be way down. I think advocating for absentee ballots, uh, like we're going to be doing, is a great idea. And we should always encourage people to do that for the next few weeks. Uh, but, um, I, I don't know, with the lower numbers, would we be able to accommodate it in our, in our polling places the way we normally do? Um, whether it's with tape on the floors or whatever to, to, you know, just to make sure people are paying attention to that. It's what they're doing at some of these big box stores and so on. And, um, so, I just, it's a thought. I mean, obviously, we have crunch time at 7:00 AM, uh, top four, 30, 5 o'clock maybe. There's another crunch time where a lot more people will show up. But the numbers normally are, are lighter throughout the day, um, at all polling places. And then, uh, um, and then with the absentee ballots, I think the numbers might be low enough to where we could get by. I'm just thinking out loud only because all these moving parts kind of, uh, are a little potentially frightening. I don't know.
Okay. Good. Um, Lynn, did you have something you wanted to throw in there? Your hand is up.
My hand is up?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just listening to you guys, and if you want to ask me questions, I'm happy to answer. But I've just presented you with three different options, and there's pros and cons for all of them. Um, I have my preference, but the, the ball stops in your court. You've got to decide whether you're gonna do three sites, whether you're gonna do one site, whether you're gonna do drive-through. Uh, this is up to you. Um, I'm looking, and my, my perspective is the safety of the election officials and the voters. And that's my whole focus on, I'm not looking at September. I'm not looking at November. Any decisions that we're making tonight, if you make them, are not relevant to those. And the state is looking at making accommodations for some of the things that, that come into play there. There's a handful of towns that are SB2, have gotten past the deliberative session like we did, but got caught up in this mess and saying, "How are we going to do our elections to make it easy for the voters, to make it safe for the voters, to make it safe for the election officials?" And we're in unprecedented times. There's, there's no question. Um, I think normally I would say I don't like changing voting locations because people are accustomed to, "This is where I go, and, and I, and I want to go there." And I understand that, and that's my objection, or that's my, that's the pro to keeping three sites. Um, but I think people have gotten past when you normally vote for town. And they all understand that we've been postponing. And so therefore, the people in town are saying, "Yeah, we know we are postponing, but what are we gonna do?" And so, they're looking for what we're going to do, and they will adjust... do?" And so they're looking for what we're going to do, and they will adjust as long as we can get the, the word out, um, if you decide not to do three, if you decide to do one, or you decide to do drive-through at one location at DPW, I think we can get the word out to the town people via, um, electronic signboards, which we have enough we can do. Um, we can do, um, town, uh, community TV promotionals as far as where we're going to do it, how we're going to do it, what people need to expect also, how you do absentee. We need to promote absentee voting because that will make it easier no matter what we do. Uh, we've promoted it for the past month. We've gotten increased numbers, but not significant. We're, we're right around a hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty-five requests for absentee ballots. I would like to see three or four times that number to make it easier, no matter what we're doing, whether it's in person at three, whether it's in person at one, whether it's drive-through at three, whether it's drive-through at one. I would like to see more, and if we can, um, send out an absentee ballot request form to all the registered voters in town, that might get more people, um, requesting them, because they understand, a lot of people don't want to come in person because they're concerned, whether it's for themselves, whether it's for people in their household, whatever it is, they're concerned. Um, and so the more we can do to provoke, um, promote absentee ballot requests, I've done what I can, there's only so much we can do, but we can do more via mail and via community TV that I think we should do.
Hey, thank you. I, I agree with what you're saying. Um, Bill, I got you down next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the problem that I have with the, with the DPW site is we're pivoting away from three locations that we as a council have dedicated for voting sites, and now at the last minute, we're directing people to the, to the, to the DPW. I, I think that's unfair, to me, I, I find, uh, I find that to be a little bit unfair to the voters of the community, that's number one. Number two, that depending on, on the voting numbers, I mean, conceivably, you could see cars queuing out onto Turkey Hill Road, uh, trying to get into the DPW garage to be able to vote. So from, from, from a traffic perspective, I have a concern with that as well. So I'm not enthralled with having the election, um, voting being held at, at the, at the DPW garage. I do think we should keep to what we have done as a council when we had, when we had the, the major problem with that one central loading, uh, voting site when we moved to three. I think we, I think we stick with the three sites. People know exactly where they're going. I like what Paul has done as it relates to the traffic flows. Um, I expect, I expect that'll probably be tweaked, um, as, as we get closer to Election Day, but the drive-through voting at the three lo-, at the three precincts makes absolute sense, and it's, you know, as far as the weather goes, you know, e- even when we're voting indoors, people have to park, park their cars, get out and walk across the parking lot soaking wet to get inside a, a, you know, the, the polling area. So I think, you know, we're all, we're all New Hampshire people, all New Englanders, you know, we're, we're used to adverse weather, so I don't think that should be problematic to, to conducting an election. And if there are issues regarding, you know, the voting, then, you know, it just, it just, I'm not going to lie, it's, it's going to make for a longer eve- evening by having to do a hand count. I know a lot of people don't like to have to do a hand count if that's the case, but I think that the safer course of action is the drive-through voting. We, it's a good plan, it makes sense, but we keep the precincts that we have. That way, people know exactly where they're going to vote. Um, it'll make things simple on Election Day, and that's really what we need to be doing, is keeping it simple so that voters know exactly where they're going to vote. But I, and the other, the other point is, we need to really drive, drive home the absentee balloting. I think we need to be doing, using any and all forms of, uh, social media, print media to, um, get out to people that the absentee ballot is a viable option for them to be able to vote in the privacy of their own home and be able to drop it off to Town Hall or, or put it in the mail for delivery to Town Hall. So that's where I stand on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Nancy?
Uh, first of all, I have a question. I did review the request form for an absentee ballot, and I guess I had a misunderstanding. I thought, and Lynn, you can correct me, I thought that when you had a request form for an absentee ballot, there was a place where it had to be notarized. Is that, I couldn't find it. Is that-
No.
It's not? Okay.
It does not need to be.
Okay. So if I were to receive that, uh, fill it out, either mail it back or drop it off, there's nothing that would prevent me or slow response to, to you return, to the return? If you had a note, that would take a burden?
There is a spot for a witness, which the state, um, the AG and, and the Secretary of State have both said, "That's an issue, and we don't need to worry about that." If you've got somebody who is self-isolating, and they're the only one there, they don't have anybody that can witness it, but it can be witnessed in other places, so that's not an issue. There's no notarization issue.
Okay. So that was my first question. Uh, the second comment is the social distancing, that's going to be more of a problem if we consolidate into one place as compared to if we maintain the three places. So I think that's one rationale. It makes, I understand-
Nancy, to a certain extent, you're right, with the exception of St. John Newman.
Why is that?
Because it is so small and so tight.
But it's also the smallest population of voters.
But keeping social distancing there is an issue. We can do it, if we have to do it, we will do it, but it is an issue there.
Right, and I think key to anything that the decision is made, the key is to have that absentee ballot as high as possible, and the suggestion of mailing out to every registered voter, a short note, "Here, if you want to use it, here's the request," that's going to facilitate it much more than any signs, you know, gl-
We, we've been pushing it, and I'm, I'm disappointed in the response.
But if I'm a-
I would have hoped, I would have hoped to have more absentee requests, and we need to push it more and more and more, no matter what we do.
But if I'm a stay-at-home person, I don't drive to see the signs, and I don't go to the store, where am I going to find that information at?
You're going to find, you're going to find it on the internet, you're going to find it on social media, um, and this is why I have said I would like to mail to everybody-
That's my-
-a request, so they do it.
I-
Now, a lot of people won't do it, but some will, and, and we can increase it, but that will, I don't care about the expense. That's, that can be covered by the state.
That's correct.
I think we can do it, and that will increase it, so that no matter what we do as far as voting day, that will help. And I'm hoping those numbers will increase. I'm disappointed that they are not higher than they are now despite what we've been doing.
I think the mailing out is going to be key, and I think you're going to, if there's going to be an increase, that's going to do it. So the bottom line is, I think I want to stick with the three. The major con against it is you're requiring more people to actually function there, and I'm-
I'm not, I'm not worried about more people.
Well, I know at one point you were concerned about the people who worked there, because-
Yeah, but we can, we can fill in with other people. I'm not concerned about that.
Okay, then that, that's one concern that is not legitimately a concern. So I would stick with the three.
I am, the only thing I would say is, we have an issue, if you are going to try and do the three places with drive-through, we have an issue with ballots.
Well, either way, I'm, alright, so- Drive-through or not.
If you are handling the ballots outside-
I understand.
The, the machines will gag on them. Um, we have problems with the machines gagging on ballots when we have hot, humid days, never mind outside, so y- y- you're going to be doing hand counting all night long. Um, if you're going to, if you're going to do three places, I'm going to suggest you do in-person and hope to heck you can get absentees so you don't have that many. I would not promote drive-by or drive-through for three places. First of all, you can't count on the weather, and if you plan on doing it and the weather turns to crap, you're dead in the water. So if you're going to do three places, you do in-person, and we manage to do social distancing, and we can do that, and we can manage it, but I would not do drive-through with three polling places. If you want to do drive-through, you do one where you can handle the ballots inside.
That, I, with that in mind, that's why I talked about the social distancing, because it would be inside. Social distancing is not an issue if you're going to drive-through.
Okay. Um, Paul, you had something you wanted to throw in there?
Yeah, um, honestly, we have not put, made a push for absentee ballots. It hasn't been put out on NICSOL. It hasn't been put out, it hasn't been put out on our social media, our web, our Facebook pages, uh, through town, through Parks and Rec, in other areas. Um, I think tomorrow, we can safely say that that will happen through all our social media that we have in the town, our Twitter accounts, our, uh, Facebook pages. Then we're going to change the signboards over. We're going to do NICSOL. We're going to put announcements up on Channel twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, so people know about it. And s- and also, we're going to start talking about sending out the, uh, absentee ballot forms to all the households as well.
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
We, we can, we can do a community service TV announcement whereby we get on community TV and say, "Here's what we're doing. You know, it, we're in unprecedented times, and here's what, here, here's how we're going to handle it. If you're going to vote in person, here's what you could expect, and if you don't want that, you can do absentee." And we can have, um, Nick run this through, um, you know, Channel twenty for as long as he can. Um, he has a bulletin board that goes up in between various sessions. He can announce it, put the announcement on there. We can have that as far as, here's where the voting is going to be, here's winner's going to be, here's how you get absentees. We can, we can do that on community TV, so that will help.
Yep.
I'm just saying, if you're going to do three sites, you do it in-person, you don't do it drive-through. If you want to do drive-through, you do one site.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
Um, I guess, I think I've heard enough on the issue that I know which way I want to go. I don't know about the rest of you, and I, is this got a, is this done through a motion, or we just, we just say?
If we're going to change the polling, we need to make that decision, I see you, Lon. We need to make that decision preferably tonight so that we can get moving. Uh, if we don't change the polling locations, we don't have to do anything. So I, I guess we need to come to a consensus. If they're, if we're going to make a change, we need a motion.
Well, I, I guess at this point, I would make a mo-, I, I guess, I want to leave it status quo and then put all the social distancing, um, distancing issues in there, uh, in there, but do it, uh, three, three polling places, uh, with, uh, in-person.
All right, give me just a second, okay? Lon, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, just some thoughts. Um, I don't know why more moving parts is better than less. I can't figure that out. Um, I had followed the discussion and, uh, done some personal thinking about it, and then comes, uh, this afternoon, uh, the, uh, DPW and drive-through and Lynn's explanation of all of that. I favor that. I, the only reason we're spending the forty minutes that we're spending talking about this is because things are different, and I think the voting bloc in Miramac understand that, and I don't believe that changing from three to one for an election that's coming be about in, in just whatever circumstances is going to be that bothersome, and setting up three places, uh, yes, sure, stay, if you do that, stay with what we've always done, I think is unsafe for the people, and I appreciate Barbara's comments about privacy. I could tell you stories about my family growing up in that kind of privacy about elections. I won't, um, but keep in mind why we're discussing this, and I'm, I'm totally okay with the location of DPW, and Paul, thank you for all the hard work for the other three places. It looks like it would work. I would have a really big, um, concern about the narrow confines of the in-and-out at St. John Newman, but that's another thing. But anyway, my thoughts. Go with, uh, DPW, one spot, drive-through, and be done with it. Thank you, Tom.
Okay. What I, what I wanted to do is try and narrow things down, and I was going to just ask for consensus concepts of between one versus three, whether it's drive-through or it's in-person. Can we agree with, with, uh, that concept alone, one versus three? I personally think three would be the right way to go, just to avoid changing. Um, and I, I understand what you said, Lon, I, I really do, but I, I just, and, and it is an unusual circumstance, and there's a lot of other, I mean, all the issues, the pros and cons.
That's fine, I'm just to express my thoughts.
So, does, does anybody have heartburn over one versus three at this point? I know Peter suggested maybe three. I think three would be a good idea. Lon suggested one, Bill saying three. Barbara?
Can I clarify just for our, for minute taker? One versus three means having one polling site versus three polling sites.
Yeah, I'm just trying to narrow our, our choices down for a minute here until we can get to a final decision. So yes, one site versus three sites, and Nancy's saying three also. So it looks like generally, people want to go with three sites. Um, the same three we've been using, and, and that then leaves us with a question of whether we do in-person or drive-through. Um, and I've heard a couple of negatives for drive-through, especially if we do it at three places. Does anybody else have anything they want to add to the discussion? Finley?
Actually, it's, I don't, I'm not necessarily going to add, I guess, it's probably a rehash, but I just really believe vulnerable populations should do an absentee ballot, absolutely, and that's the new life in general, I believe, whatever you do. If you're a vulnerable group, do not go out. Um, I have, uh, my parents, uh, live with me, and they're a little bit older than I am, but, uh, I, I'm always concerned about that. I try and, you know, make sure that things are done to protect them. They're healthy as the day is long right now, but I know that they're in that population. So I, I think, I can appreciate Lon's point, um, and it was an interesting thought, but, um, I, I think, again, for what I had said earlier, I believe if we can really push the absentee ballots, and I think the mailing will in fact take a, you know, real good care of that, um, and those populations stay away, um, I, I think it will be safe, and we'll focus on our distancing and everything. So I'm in, inclined to, uh, continue the way we do it and, and really work our plan for the, uh, safe practices, uh, that we have to count on.
Okay, so I guess I'm going to open it up now. If somebody wants to make a motion to move away from what we're currently doing with three sites and, uh, in-person voting, um, then, then they should do that at this point. Otherwise, it sounds like we stay with the status quo. Finley?
Um, I just was going to say, I think Peter did have a motion. I don't recall exactly what it was. Billy, I think wants to say something.
He gets his dog.
I am on mute. It's not me. Shocking. Shocking. It's not me. So, uh, I don't know what his motion was, but we, if that's still on the table, we might deal with that, take it off the table or put it back together, whatever.
Well, I didn't think he ever made a motion. I, I apologize if I cut you off and you were in the process of doing it.
I did.
What we're gonna make.
May I say something? Eileen?
Yes. Um, what I just wanted to say is that, um, the reason, as most of you know, that
we are, um, talking about three locations versus one, and that's the most important thing, that, uh, the most timely, time-sensitive thing that we have, the only time-sensitive particularly thing that we have, is because if you, um, decide to change the three locations that you currently have, you have to do it, um, at least, what is it?
Thirty days.
Thirty days prior to the election. So it have to be by May 21st.
Twenty third. Twenty third.
Twenty first.
Twenty first would be next Thursday, which would give us thirty days. Thirty, thirty two days.
Twenty third. Twenty second. Twenty first. I'm sorry.
We'd have to do it by our meeting on the 21st, if we had a meeting on the 21st.
Would have to have a meeting on the 21st or before? On or before the 21st. If you wanted to change the three locations that you currently have, that's per the town charter. So I guess what I would ask you, I think what I heard, I've heard so far, is that, um, Bill and Tom and Nancy and Peter and Finley are all in favor of the three locations. Not sure that we heard a definitive thing from Barbara and Lon is opposed to it. So Barbara, do you have a comment?
No, I have no comment. Um, I think from a control aspect, one side is better than three, but then I know people who show up at the polling station and they have no clue where they're supposed to go. So I think you're still gonna get a, a certain amount of that no matter what. So.
So you do have to make the decision collectively, so you don't have no opinion?
I think one is better.
Okay. So you got five?
I'm gonna ask for a motion to stick with three or to, to move to one if somebody wants to make that motion. Peter?
I'd make a motion that we stick with three, um, in-person, uh, polling places.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bill. Motion by Peter and seconded by Bill to stick with three polling places in person to not do the drive-through. Um, is there any other discussion on that motion? So we'll go with a roll call vote. Lon?
Yeah, I would, yay. I'll accept the wisdom of the rest of my counselors.
And myself, yes. Nancy? That was a yes? Yes. Thank you. Oh.
One time I'm not muted.
Peter? Peter? You're muted, Peter. I'm sorry.
I shouldn't laugh at Nancy. Yes.
And Bill?
Boyd, I.
Okay, so that passes seven zero zero to stick with the three locations and, and in person.
Did Barbara vote?
No.
What? You voted no? I thought you said yes. I'm sorry.
No, I did not. You didn't call on me. It's okay.
Bill, did I call on you?
Yeah.
Yes, you did. And I voted aye.
Six one.
All right. So Barbara, you're saying no. So that's six one zero with Barbara in the negative. Okay. Um, Lynn, you all right with that?
Lynn's gone.
Lynn's gone. Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I don't. Uh, I'm good. Thank you.
But I don't, everybody noticed whether or not Brian was there, but he's been nice and quiet. Um, Lynn had asked him to come in as, as a, an assistant moderator to help with the discussion if necessary.
When Brian first came in, I looked at him, Kobe, he's not blinking. Well, it was just a picture of, I'm glad to see we have a, a live picture.
And Nick was making sure I was okay before he actually put me through, so.
Okay, good. All right. Um, any other comments or follow-up on that discussion? It went long enough. Saying none, we'll go back to item one.
Bye, Brian.
Bye, Brian. Thank you. One on our agendas to?
Tom, if I may, Tom?
Yes.
Did we decide on drive-through or in-person?
In-person is what we put in part of that motion from Peter.
Thank you.
I, I personally felt like drive-through was gonna create too many additional headaches, um, no matter how it was done. And, um,
Just curious.
Don't feel like we'd have that much trouble with social distancing and safety of people. But if they, anybody has any concern, all said here multiple times, absentee ballot is the answer. You don't have to come out and vote. You have time to request an absentee ballot and get it turned in and get it flipped around and we'll take care of it on election day. Okay? So we'll go back to item one now under old business, which is to the extension of the emergency ordinance. Back in, um, March, excuse me, around the 23rd or whenever it was, we enacted our first, uh, emergency ordinance to, uh, basically shut downtown facilities, um, for the safety of the town employees and the, and the people, uh, corrisparate with the governor's stay-at-home orders and things of that nature. Um, that state per town charter, that's in effect for no more than 61 days or until repealed by the town council. And 61 days comes up in a day or two. So we need to make a decision to either extend it or it will lapse by itself. And, uh, so that's what's on the table today to extend our EO1 order as written or to modify it as necessary. Peter?
I would, uh, make a motion to, uh, extend the EO1 order, um, for a period of, uh, I, I'd like to say at least for a period of, uh, 30 days.
Peter, can I suggest we just extend it and let it go for whenever we repeal it or 61 days?
Uh, I, yeah, I mean, yeah, whichever you want. I mean, if we find out in two weeks, I guess things are dramatically better. It's nice to have that option, but even if we said 30 days, could we revisit it?
We can always revisit it, yeah.
Seconded.
So repeat your motion for me, please.
My motion would be just to, uh, extend, uh, emergency order one, EO1.
Second.
By a time limit or, or by the 60 days?
Uh, I would say, if it goes by the 60 day, we can revisit.
Okay. We can always repeal it if necessary. And Barbara, you seconded that?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion's on the table to extend the order for up to 61 days and repeal it if necessary. Before that, um, the discussion is wide open now. Does anybody want to talk to that motion? Peter, you get first dibs at it, but?
No, I mean, I, I don't, I, I'd like to follow with the governor. I like, you know, uh, and what he's done so far and, you know, um, watch and see how he, the phase in works on some of these things. Um, and, and, and watch the numbers. Watch the numbers. Uh, so that's, that's really where I'm coming from.
Okay. Lon, you, are you good or do you want to say something?
All right, fine. I thought I seconded it, but that's okay, too.
Oh, I saw you making motions, but I didn't realize that was a second. I thought maybe you were disappointed you didn't get a chance to say something before the motion was made. Anybody else have any other comments on the motion? Saying none, we'll call for a vote. Um, Lon, we'll start with you?
Would, yay.
And myself, yes. Nancy?
Yes.
Finley?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
Bill?
Boyd, aye.
Okay, so that passes seven zero zero to extend the ordinance, the emergency ordinance, uh, as written for up to 61 days. Okay? Which brings us to new business. Item number one, the Governor's Office for Emergency Relief and Recovery Coronavirus Relief Fund Grant Agreement. Town Council to decide to allow town manager to apply for the GOEPRR Coronavirus Relief Grant. Um, the, the governor has released up to $605,000 for the town of Merrimack to recover costs associated with the COVID-19 shutdown, all of these things, including stuff like the election costs that we have to go through special in order to handle this. Um, but in order to do that, we have to apply for the grants from the, the Gopher Committee. Um, we have to first apply for, we have to first make an application to be accepted into the grant. And then each month from now for the next three months, we need to make applications showing where we've spent money, uh, in order to get reimbursed for that. So at this point, we're looking for authorization for Eileen to apply for this grant in the name of the town and/or her proxy, I guess. Any other comments or suggestions or thoughts? Lon?
Just a question for the staff, for Eileen and her staff. Uh, is this an overwhelming task that we're going to perhaps recommend that she do?
Absolutely not. Um,
Thank you.
But thank you. I, I just wanted to say there are very few things that are included in this. So, um, we're going to, um, we haven't had increased welfare costs. Um, we, most of the costs that are, um, that we've incurred have been for overtime and that sort of thing for, um, the, mostly for the fire department. Um, and most of that, 75% of it has been paid, will be paid for by FEMA. So, um, and we're not eligible to apply for the 25% out of this. So they're very, um, very limited amounts. We have, um, we have some legal costs that we've incurred. Um, we have things like, um, you know, like the mailings that we're talking about doing. Um, we can, we can send out, um, the, the, um, request for the absentee ballot, um, with a self-addressed stamped envelope, I think I said, and then we can, um, we can send it back to people with the ballot back to people. Um, and that's all very expensive, so, um, that'll be a very good use for that. Also, for the, uh, town hall and any modifications or, you know, signage or anything that we want to do here or, um, any of the other public facilities for protection for the public as well as the employees, um, we, we can do using that money. And, um, and also, um, for obviously the polling places, we can, there's all kinds of, um, things that we can do, uh, to make people as, people including, um, the, uh, the election workers and keeping them protected and, and safe as possible. So, um, no, there isn't a lot to it because there isn't a lot that qualifies for it, unfortunately. But thank you.
All right. Things, things like this, uh, virtual meeting, the cost for the software and the cost for phones and computers for people to work from home and all of those various different things should be covered, I would think. So anything, including Nicholas' extra time to work with this kind of stuff and help us to do the virtual meetings and stuff, um, may very well be covered. You, you guys know how to handle that better than I do, but, um, don't limit yourself.
I'm sorry. Every department has been instructed to, um, gotten copies of these and has been instructed to keep, keep track of all those costs individually and submit, um, submit them to Paul. But they need to be approved by, uh, Paul and myself before they are incurred, um, because we want to make sure that they're, um, within the scope of this. Um, I, I said maybe we could get a COVID car for the fire department, you know how they have the, the car that's driving, uh, going around, but there was no, that was a no-go. Trying to be creative, but anyway.
But that's a good try, yeah.
Yeah, it was a good try. Um, and, uh, Chief Duke said, how about a fire truck? That's just about the price.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on whether we should apply for this, uh, funding? We need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the town council allow our town manager, Eileen Gavinell, or her designee to apply for the Gopher Coronavirus, Coronavirus Relief Grant. And furthermore, that either Eileen or her designee be authorized to sign the paperwork necessary to get the process moving forward.
Second.
Motion by Bill and seconded by Peter. Um, I'm guessing there's no more comment? Any, anybody say anything else on that? Saying none, we'll go for a vote. Lon?
Would, yay.
And Koenig, yes. Uh, Nancy?
Yes.
Finley?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
Bill?
Boyd, uh.
You just muted yourself. That, oh, you said aye. I, I'm sorry. I sounded like you said Boyd, um, and you hadn't quite figured out what you were gonna say. I thought that was pretty, but seven zero zero, you authorize the town manager to, um, apply for the Gopher Grant. Thank you. And then, uh, the second item on our new business is the Public Works Week proclamation. The town council to designate the week of May 17 to 23 as National Public Works Week. Um, Eileen, were you or Paul or Kyle gonna talk to this?
Uh, I'm not prepared to, sorry.
I'm trying to get. You're not cleared to?
I said I was not prepared to.
Prepared to.
It's something that we do every year. It's, uh, it's a proclamation for, to, um, acknowledge the hard work and dedication of the public works employees. Uh, some of our unsung heroes, they're all working now this year. Um, they're unable to work from home, so they're out there, uh, doing all the work and, um, and, uh, doing it without, um, complaint. Uh, so we really appreciate them in particular this year, but we appreciate them all the time and, um, feel disappointed, uh, that we aren't gonna be having our lunch in, right, Finley? We love to go to that lunch and Tom goes too, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
Look forward to it every year.
Yep. With the cake, with the trucks on it and stuff like that. We like that. So, uh, but anyway, um, big thanks and, um, appreciation for the, uh, public works employees for everything that they do every day.
Absolutely. Thank you. There's the cat. Um, Lon?
Yeah, as a former public works employee, uh, I seconded all the erudite remarks of Eileen. Um, it's a force of people that I've heard different jokes about, but I also understand how important the tasks that get done without us really knowing, uh, are. And the people that work in, uh, DPW, uh, for us are real heroes. And, uh, so I make a motion that we, uh, do proclaim, uh, March 17th through the 23rd, 2020 as recognized in Merrimack as National DPW Employee Week.
Seconded.
Motion made by Lon and seconded by Bill. I don't know, did we have a certificate in town hall to sign or?
Yes.
Yes, there was.
It's a long ago, I forgot already. But that's a great thing. And, uh, I, I certainly appreciate. And I, I certainly appreciate all of the remarks and agree that Public Works has been doing a great job for us and, and is one of the groups that are able to work from home, out dealing with our streets and our parks and things of that nature. So we appreciate the work that they're doing and although they don't, aren't considered first responders, they are certainly a very important part of our town. And we appreciate the work they're doing. Any other comments anybody would like to make before we take a vote? Finley?
Just real quickly, I just, I know that in the wintertime is when they're always on their toes and working really, really hard at that point. And I had a brother, I have a brother-in-law who used to work for a city to our south and he was always amazed that our public works guys just were non-stop. And in, in the community where he worked, he always said they had to pay people to wear a pager and then you couldn't even always get them to respond to the page. So our guys, they come in when it begins and I don't think they go home until it's over, sometimes two days later. So I, I do echo everybody's sentiments. I do really appreciate all that they do for our community.
Peter?
Just a great job by these folks at DPW, top to bottom. We have great public works, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Offer a vote on the proclamation of Public Works Week. Lon?
Would jay.
Koenig, yay. Nancy?
Yay.
Finley?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
And Bill?
Boyd, aye.
Okay, so that passes 7-0-0 as well. Very much. And I hope you'll pass on our, our wishes and whatnot to Kyle and the, and the whole DPW team.
We sure will. Yes, they'll be very grateful for that. They get, even though we don't mean to, forget them. It seems like many of the other groups of employees get more recognition. But, so it's nice when we, we take the time to, you know, just appreciate them. So I will pass it along. I know you value them a great deal.
And, and it's not just the folks that run the plows or fix the streets, it's also the wastewater department and solid waste.
And mechanics and, and the transfer station and, what else we got?
Cancel wastewater, so.
Equipment maintenance, I said that.
Oh, yeah.
Made it all.
I hit it all.
Thank you. Which brings us to the conclusion of our standard agenda, leading us to minutes from April 23rd.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the Thursday, April 23rd, 2020 town council meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Peter.
Lon.
Lon? Seconded by Lon? Sorry, I wasn't watching.
Was it you, Peter?
Oh, it was Lon.
Does anybody, anybody have any other comments on the minutes?
I didn't see anything, but I was curious if Council Healy found anything.
Yeah, I did, but now I, of course I can't find it, it's dark. It's okay, it wasn't a big thing, but it was just like a repetitive statement.
Okay.
So, I pass.
Okay. There's no other comments, we'll call for a vote on the minutes as presented. All those in favor, by roll call. Lon Woods?
Would jay.
And Koenig, yes. Nancy?
Seconding me, yes.
Finley?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
And Bill?
Boyd, aye.
Okay, so the, the minutes passed 7-0-0 as presented. Which brings us to comments from the press, which we're not doing, which we don't have anybody calling in, and comments from the public, nobody's called in, nobody in the waiting room or waiting to have called in. If you're watching this online, the phone number is, should be on your screen along with the password. If you call in really quick, we will try and, and take any public comments from the public. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to mention that tomorrow, May 15th, is the last day to file exemptions for elderly, veteran, or solar. That was not extended with the emergency order one. So you, tomorrow's the deadline to file once again your solar exemption, your elderly exemption, or your veteran exemption. Those are all due by tomorrow, close of business at 4:30.
Okay, and that filing deadline was already a one-month extension from the April 15th just because of the applications with having to, to either call in, mail in, or Dropbox some kind of an application or an extension, correct?
That is correct.
May I ask Paul a question?
Certainly.
Sure, right? So are, have we received the same elderly exemption and solar exemption? Are we, are we concerned because we have not received all of them or that we haven't received a similar amount? Clearly some people are on and off, but do we look like we're lacking in those?
No, I just, we, we are going through, I believe earlier this week, we placed phone calls to everybody who we did not have that were from last year that we knew of. We have several that have come in. It's just, just wanted to put it out there that tomorrow is the last day, if anybody was really trying to think about giving an exemption. I know this morning we had about 10 or 15 in the lockbox out front and tonight I, I assume that several people have dropped their stuff off. I know we have to go and get some. I do want to, you know, say that assessing department has been going well above and beyond on some of these. If the people cannot get to town hall because they're, they're shut in or don't have, can't get there, we are making exceptions and actually trying to pick up stuff up from, from some of the elderly on some of their exemptions if they cannot get to town hall and some of the paperwork. So we are, they are going above and beyond to get some of these people their exemption if they qualify.
I just thought of something else.
Uh-oh.
We have, we have hired a person to replace Chuck's assistant and he has started already.
Yes.
So we have two IT guys now and we are, we hired Mike Rotas' replacement. I just met him today. So he was the field assessor for the assessing department, obviously. We are in the final process of hiring an assistant chief to replace Assistant Chief Pearson. And is there another position? So anyway, even though we're going through this time, oh, we've also hired a couple of firefighters, some maintainers. So even though we're going through this crazy time, we're still, we're still able to get people and we've got some really good quality people. And Sharon is working feverishly to make sure that, that all the, their paperwork is in. So we're happy that some of these positions that have gone unfilled for a while have been filled. So I'll, I'll be sending you more information about the individuals later on in the week or tomorrow, right?
Okay, that's about later on in the week.
Yes.
All right, I still haven't seen anybody trying to call in, so I'm assuming there's nobody from the press or public that's trying to reach us. We'll go to comments from the council. Do you have council, have comments they'd like to make? We'll start with Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to take the opportunity to, to recognize the, the faculty and the staff at Merrimack High School for providing signs to recognize the seniors that are graduating this year, especially for my daughter Jade and her beau and her friends. This has been a very difficult time for them. This is an opportunity where they should be out enjoying each other's company, wrapping up finals, preparing to go on to college, putting on their, their captain gown, walking and getting that diploma. Unfortunately, I, I, I don't think that that's, we don't know, but I, I think the way that it's going, I, I don't think that there's, I think there's a slimmer hope for, for graduation occurring. But that being said, I really want to thank the faculty and the staff for, for producing the signs and really, you know, blasting two weekends ago with all the seniors with these signs, recognizing them as a proud Merrimack High School senior. I think it was a, a great testament for, for the, for the seniors in our community that have worked hard to get to this particular point. I think it reflects a tremendous amount of community pride that in our darkest days right now, I think it's really good that we're, we're having that particular pride being produced in our community. And I also think it's, it's, you know, with the fact that a lot of us are sheltering in place or really limiting the places where we travel, I think it's a nice thing to really see on the side of the road, to see, to see the home of a, of a Merrimack High School senior with their, with their plaque displayed there. So I think it's a wonderful thing. So thank you so much to the faculty, to the staff, Principal Putney and, and her team for, for, for doing that. I think it was, it was a tremendous gesture and it, it certainly didn't go unnoticed. The second point along those lines, just want to remind people, again, there are so many resources where you're able to, like we're doing right now through Zoom or through FaceTime with your medical professional. If you're having an issue with, you know, some clouds in your head, substance abuse, you need somebody to, to talk to, there are resources out there. You know, we have the resources posted on our website of MerrimackNH.gov. If we don't, I'm, I'm sure that there is, there is a link somewhere on there that can direct you to those resources, but can always pick up town hall and make a phone call if, if you're really needing somebody to talk to. So just want to point out that, you know, all of us, I, I think are trying to do the best that we can during these times. Some are doing better than others and I just would encourage those that are, the people in our community that are having a little bit of a difficult time, that there is, there's resources out there, there are people out there that you can talk to, to, to help you out. So I just wanted to put that out there and, and thanks, thanks for watching tonight, I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Sorry. Is anybody else want to make comment? I forgot if I saw your hand, so raise it again if you do. Nobody else has a comment? I wanted to make a couple of points and I think Bill's kind of touched on them. The testing that's available around the state is, is expanded. So if you are concerned about the coronavirus and you want to be tested for that, there are phone numbers you can contact on the state level to get testing, not necessarily here in Merrimack. But there are half a dozen or more testing sites and you can sign up to get an appointment. I think probably the closest one outside of a major city is Milford. But by all means, if you need that information, I'm sure we can get it to you or we can get it through the town website. And also the governor has opened up testing for antibodies. If you think you might have had COVID-19, you want to find out, but there you have to go through Clear Choice, MD and make an appointment with them. They're not in Merrimack, but they are in various different places around the state. And if your insurance won't cover it, the state will. So if you have a desire to get that kind of testing done. So those people who have either been disturbed that they can't get tested or, or feel like they need to get tested, the state testing for COVID-19 is still, you should have at least one of the symptoms or be in one of the risk groups, over 60, heart condition or underlying lung conditions or something like that. But call them up and they'll be happy to make an appointment for you to go and get a test rather than just going through one of the few drive-throughs that are done, which I think are limited to residents of Manchester and Nashville. The other thing I wanted to point out was Census 2020 is still ongoing, although it's been totally overrun by this COVID-19 thing. And so if you haven't already filled out your census, you should do so because you're just going to have to be contacted. They are going to try and reach to make sure that everybody has a chance to register and it's very important, especially for a smaller state, that we get as much representation in that census as possible so that we can get our fair share of the federal dollars, our dollars coming back to us. So the public service announcement, Census 2020, if you got to form and didn't fill it out, dig through your mail and find it. If you want to help out, I'm sure they're still looking for people to help out, they're going to do their push throughout the summer and, and later into August and whatnot to try and get to as many and everybody as they possibly can. It's, I think it's critical for New Hampshire to be as well represented as we possibly One final push for absentee ballots. If you paid any attention to this meeting, you realize that the vote is coming up and it's going to be a concern for a lot of people. If it's a concern for you, then by all means, apply for an absentee ballot so that you don't have to come out, but your voice will still be heard. It's imperative that we hear from you as to what you want in your government and so we're looking for you to vote. But we don't want you to feel like you're endangered. So please, apply for an absentee ballot and keep yourself and everybody around you safer and get the vote in. It's a civic duty. For those of you that feel like you want to come out, we're going to do the best we can to make things as safe as possible. I will be there and I'm comfortable that I'll be safe. We'll have masks for everybody. One of the requirements that Len told us about last time is that anybody that comes into voting will have to wear a mask and it can be distributed if you don't have one. If you refuse to wear a mask, you can go back to your car and we will bring you an absentee ballot to vote or something of that nature. But otherwise, voting at this point is going to be as usual at our three locations and we'll proceed forward with that. It'll be June 23rd at the earliest. I think it'll probably be June 23rd and we, we ask for you to pay attention and join us in helping to drive the future of our town. If there's anything else anybody else wants to add, now's a good time. Seeing none.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Bill and seconded by Lon. Lon, do you vote?
Would jay and you all look so well. You've all done very well.
Any guests? Nancy?
Yes.
Finley? Finley, you're muted.
Yes, I thought I had unmuted it, but I obviously went backwards, sorry. Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
And Bill?
Boyd, aye, and likewise, it's great to see everybody.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned, I appreciate it, everybody. We'll see you in two weeks at this point.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.